I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence for Lisa Tetro, mother to Paige Tetro, teacher at Clinton Elementary School. Thank you. We'll open up today's school committee meeting Monday, December 9th, 2024. I'll accept a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I'll also accept a motion to review an approval of the minutes from November 18th, 2024, school committee meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor? Thank you. Dr. Meyer, I'll turn it over to you.
So we've got a lot of celebrations tonight. The first one we want to do is to recognize our 2024 John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. This scholarship is awarded to seniors based on high academic achievement on their MCAS exams. Students have a combined score that places them in the top 25% of the senior class in their home districts. Clinton High School is proud to say that 28 of our current seniors qualified for this scholarship, which grants a credit towards tuition to any Massachusetts State College or university for up to eight semesters. To help me congratulate these seniors, I'm going to have Principal Sarmak join me on stage.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Seniors, when I call your name, please come up on stage, receive your award. Ethan Frisch. Chris Gurley Bayard. Dominic Labby. Davis Lund. Carolyn Rodriguez Marquin. Rachel Wilder. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our John and Abigail Adams recipients. Thank you very much and congratulations.
And now while Principal Sarmak is up here, we'll have him move on to the staff member and student of the month from Clinton High School.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have one student and one staff member that have been nominated for student staff of the month. I'm going to start with the student of the month who planned on being here, but at the last minute she couldn't be. The student of the month is Maria Di Assis, and this was written by a staff member. Maria is consistently cheerful and outgoing. She is a student who always gets, greets others with a warm smile. She's incredibly dedicated to her studies while also maintaining a demanding job, exemplifying exceptional work ethic. Her kindness, respect, and honesty make her an admirable role model for her peers. Congratulations to Maria. Our staff member is Mrs. Lauren Russell. Mrs. Russell is an exceptional educator who consistently demonstrates kindness and compassion. She is always attentive to her students' needs, offering support and encouragement, especially during challenging times. As a teacher and a coach, she prioritizes the well-being of her students and athletes, ensuring they feel valued and cared for in the classroom. Mrs. Russell is dedicated to fostering an engaging learning environment, ensuring that all students understand the material. Congratulations, Mrs. Russell.
And now for the middle school staff and student of the month, Principal Steffy.
I love this part of my job. Earlier today, we had our once every six days, we call it common planning time, of all of our fifth grade teachers. And I said to all the fifth grade teachers, I just got to tell you who are recognizing as the student of the month in sixth grade. And all 15 teachers at the same time went, oh, I love him. He's the best. Cameron Bamforth, sixth grader at Clinton Middle School. I'm quoting some of his teachers who are here this evening. Come on up, Cam. Cameron, grade six has selected you as the student of the month for December. Come on over, Cam. It has been a pleasure getting to know, this is from his teachers, it has been a pleasure getting to know Cam over the past few months. He's a hard worker who always gives his best effort. He works well with others and is well-liked by all of his peers. Cam is the first person to lend a helping hand whenever needed. He truly cares about his peers and the adults in the classroom. He also has great leadership qualities that are exhibited in the classroom and as a PBIS ambassador. Cam is also involved in many after-school activities, including starring in the all-school play. He is an exemplary student in his classroom, but also for his entire grade at Clinton Middle School. Congratulations, Cam. Mr. McGowan is a guidance counselor at Clinton Middle School. Where's Mr. McGowan? Excellent. Mr. McGowan wears many hats. Mr. McGowan wears probably too many hats for me to go through all of them this evening at Clinton Middle School. One of the hats that he wears is that of MCAS guru, right? What do you want to do with that hat, Mr. McGowan? You want to throw that in the rest? Yeah, yep. One of the unsung heroes of this thankless laborious work, Mr. McGowan is one of our MCAS guru. He's the faculty leader of real mentors who we, who meet weekly on Wednesdays after schools, after school, to build leadership skills and connectivity. He advocates without apologizing for students, always prioritizing what is the best for his kids. Most importantly, Mr. McGowan works day in and day out, leading with heart, listening to, caring for, and supporting Clinton Middle School students. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition, Mr. McGowan.
All right, and now for our elementary school recipients, Principal Silvio.
All right. Our student of the month at Clinton Elementary School is Carolyn Klune. Come on up, Carolyn. Carolyn was nominated by her teachers, and so this is what they shared with me. Can't see it. Carolyn has been an exceptional student in math this year. Each day she enters the classroom with a positive attitude and a strong readiness to learn. Her enthusiasm is contagious, and she consistently contributes to class discussions, particularly in small group settings. Carolyn is eager to raise her hand, share her work, and explain her thinking. She's often participating actively in number talks in the classroom. Her dedication and perseverance are also evident in her approach to tests and quizzes. Even when faced with a challenging question, she never gives up and always strives to do her best. In addition to her achievements in math, Carolyn has made remarkable progress in her reading. Thanks to her hard work and determination, she recently has met her goals, which is a testament to her improvement and commitment to hard work. We are incredibly proud of how far Carolyn has come this year, and it's only December. Her growth and attitude towards learning are inspiring, and we are excited to see all the great things she will continue to achieve this year in fourth grade. Congratulations, Carolyn. Our staff of the month was nominated overwhelmingly by many staff in the building, so I'd like to invite Susan Towne to come up here with me. I tried to sum up most of the nominations that I received, so I'm going to do my best to capture that here. She was nominated for her unwavering dedication and commitment to her students at CES. Susan goes above and beyond in advocating unapologetically for her students and building meaningful, trusting relationships with their families. A staff member shared in their nomination that she had the privilege of witnessing this firsthand during our annual character walk, when she ran into one of her students' parents. The moment was deeply moving as they embraced, both tearing up while reflecting on the progress her son had made during his time at CES. This powerful interaction exemplifies the deep connection that Susan fosters with the family she serves and the genuine impact she has on the lives of her students. Her tireless efforts extend far beyond the classroom. She regularly works beyond the school day to ensure that every student's needs are met. I actually think she sleeps there because she's there before the custodians most days. And her commitment to helping students make their academic and communication gains is truly exceptional. She is not only a dedicated educator, but also an unofficial mentor to many of us at CES. As a team member, Susan has been an invaluable source of guidance and support to her colleagues, both as a staff member and as a speech and language pathologist. Her wealth of knowledge and experience shared generously with teachers, SLPs, staff, and families helps everyone grow and succeed. Another staff member said since she began working at CES, Susan has been an incredible mentor, teaching her all about the school's processes and resources and best practices. Her willingness to take time to share her expertise has made a profound difference in her work, and she is grateful to have her as a colleague. Working with Susan is truly a blessing. Her dedication, empathy, and leadership have made her an irreplaceable member of our team. We are incredibly fortunate to have Susan Towne at CES, and I can't thank her enough for the work that she does for our students.
All right, so normally we give out one staff member and one student of the month from each school, but I was, I had multiple faculty members from the Clinton Elementary School reach out to me, and they wanted to know if they could nominate Ms. Silvio to be recognized as staff member of the month. So I said, that's fine, write something up for me. So they wrote something up, so we're going to recognize Ms. Silvio for her work. Clinton Elementary School has had a lot of growth over the past couple of years, and we are all so proud. Before COVID, CES was in a place of needing academic improvement in the state's eyes. We knew we had some work to do, but COVID hit and threw us all for a loop. How are we to work in these academic areas in the midst of a pandemic? There were so many unknowns. One might think schools are figuring things out day-to-day and trying to make their, their best to keep children's academic days healthy, consistent, strong, and safe. Not only did CES provide all these for their students, we also started a new ELA program and started the beginning of ST Math. We knew we had a lot of work to do, and a pandemic wasn't going to get in the way. The pandemic slowly subsided, and we kept working hard as we all wanted CES to be the best it can be. Some recent accomplishments are looking at data within the data team to continuously add and change how we teach, what we teach, and who needs more support. The staff at CES have never looked at data so much as we have over the last four years. Grades K to 2 implemented Apple Seeds, which is a high-quality Tier One curriculum for all learners and foundational reading skills. And ST Math, CES was able to get a grant to implement ST Math, which is a visual game-based math program for students that uses spatial-temporal reasoning to help students understand math concepts. We have seen tremendous growth in MCAS math, and we'd like to think ST Math has played a part in this. We are now in year four of this grant and continue to push and challenge our students as we continue to attend PD. In terms of literacy, Channel 5 News came to highlight the great things we're doing with literacy following the COVID pandemic. Ms. Pierre Marini led the interview as a credit to all the work and passion she's shared with all of us. Ms. Silvio said, "When our school was put on a list for targeted assistance, it was my motivation to work hard and rewrite the narrative of our school. We needed to flip that to get recognition that CES staff and students deserve. This opportunity is highlighting that day in the cafeteria, when your plates were already full, but when you know better, you do better, and you all said yes. Our school deserves this recognition, and DESE suggested us." Then the governor of Massachusetts, Mara Healy, visited Clinton Elementary School on Thursday, September 19th. She was accompanied by Secretary of Education Tutwiler and Acting DESE Commissioner Johnson. The governor has chosen to visit Clinton Elementary School because of the great work that's been done in the area of early literacy. As CES works hard at moving forward based on data, we've had a strong leader who has motivated, inspired, and challenged us along the way. We would like to recognize Megan Silvio for her dedication, hard work, and leadership. We are a stronger school community, and the students and staff are lucky to have her as the principal of CES. All right, I have one last award. Every year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents recognizes typically one student from most schools, some larger schools might have a couple, but one student from each school in recognition of their academic excellence. The criteria for selecting this award is pretty much left up to the local schools. So I normally start by reaching out to our guidance department, getting a list of sort of the top, top students academically, and then kind of reviewing what they, you know, their, their body of work, sort of what they do for extracurricular activities and different things in the school. This year's recipient is currently the valedictorian of the class, and she is also a well-rounded student, and I think she's an excellent, well-deserving candidate for this award. The superintendent's award goes to Ella Askren. in March, I believe it's at Holy Cross, so we'll be attending that in a few short months. So I think that wraps up our student recognition portion for this evening. If you want to have a round of applause for all of our recipients.
On behalf of the school committee, we'd like to congratulate all our recipients tonight, students and staff. We are going to turn to our regularly scheduled agenda and will not be offended if you choose not to spend your, rest of your evening going through it. If you choose to stay, we'd love to have you. If not, and you'd like to take pictures out in the foyer, feel free. Congratulations. Do we have any public comment this evening?
No student, there's no student representative, the student couldn't make it.
No student representative. How about CTA? Nothing to report. Thank you. PTA? Nothing to report? Oh, Emily, you're here? Come on up. Rebecca, I saw, I saw Rebecca was on vacation. I didn't know if we were going to get a vacation from both of you tonight or?
Do you want to sit or do you want to stand at the podium?
Oh, stand at the podium. Why not?
Here, I'll let you have it.
There's nobody here now. It's not so bad.
We can get Jan to take a picture if you want.
Don't make Jan stand up again. She stood up enough.
All right, so here we are, it's December. We are sitting at 143 members of the PTA right now. Membership is open throughout the year, so if anyone is ever interested, you can be added. We just completed a successful book fair at the Clinton Middle School. For the month of December, if you're interested in visiting the Lancaster Celebration of Lights, which is at 117 at the Bolton Fairgrounds, you can purchase tickets through our link, and we receive a $2 donation from that. That goes on through December 30th. We are supporting the Gail's Giving Tree by purchasing eight gifts this year, and our treasurer Jess dropped off all those gifts this morning, so that is completed. We have our snowball dance coming up for CES students pre-K to fourth grade on Friday, January 24th. The Coffee Cabin has been at all three schools at least for about a week now, a week and a half, and I did parent-teacher conferences last week, and both teachers were very excited with that little extra perk in the morning, so that was great to hear. Our next meeting is this Thursday at the administration office and our final night for catalog pickup for the Cherrydale fundraiser. And since I get an opportunity to sit here and Ms. Silvio is still here, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to you as my child's principal and part of the team of people that my children get to see every day. Everything that was just talked about with ST Math and you're talking about Gigi and student of the month and Apple Seeds, my kids are six and eight and have benefited from all of that. My kids can read, my kids have fun learning, and I've never seen anything like it. And I appreciate that so much, and you just need to know that. So as a mom, I'm going to take that moment to give back to you. So thank you all for everything that you do. We don't say that enough. And if there's anything you guys need from us, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from CPAC? Or LPA? Okay. Dr. Meyer, your floor's yours.
Okay, thank you. First, we'll start with a couple staffing updates. We're informed that Janine Ngano, who's been an IAT CES for the past 24 years, is going to retire. Her retirement date will be January 6th, so we wish her well. Food service director search, that committee has been formed, the posting closed last Monday, Monday right before Thanksgiving. The committee met last week, and we started interviews today. I think we, hopefully we'll have interviews done by the end of the week with a goal of hopefully making an offer before the Christmas vacation. And there is a new HR manager working at Town Hall now. Ray Aguirre is the new HR manager. I did, he officially started, I was able to meet with Mike Ward, and I met with Ray on last Friday, just to kind of really start talking about what our entry plan looks like, and we'll start getting Ray to come to the, meet with the admin, and then meet with the, probably targeting the January faculty meetings in each building to start getting him a little FaceTime with the staff. There's a facilities update in your packet. I don't think Brian was able to be here tonight, so, but he did provide the facilities report to us. Currently is looking for a second shift custodian for CMS. One of the major projects is, we did go out to bid for a chiller replacement at Clinton Elementary School. Also, the high school chiller replacement, went out to bid, I think they were part of the same bid package. And the main thing with that is a lot of the high school project is going to be funded through sort of some COVID funds and some, it's an IV AQ, it's an air quality grant that they, improving ventilation and air quality grant, and ARPA funds. that they, improving ventilation and air quality grant, and ARPA funds. So basically, we need to get, we don't have to have those expended by the end of the year, but we need to have the contracts awarded by the end of the calendar year. So the bid opening was on the second, and they're working on the contract. Few other things that are on here, you can see the middle school generator, they're working on possibly being able to, they might have found the part to remove, the one that, to fix one that's in there, which would allow them to remove the temporary one. The tennis court resurfacing went out to bid. And that, they're getting the scope work together for the facilities storage garage that was approved at town meeting. I think it was, it may have been two town meetings ago.
The last one.
Yep. And some estimates on some fencing repairs. And there's just some other, other updates there on some of the ARPA and grants, so, so I don't think, you know, in talking to Brian, I don't think we have any major, you know, we know that the school is the primary thing going on, right, the new school project. So he's kind of got these loose ends that we're tying up and trying to spend down those grant funds, and we don't think there's any major, like, facilities warrant articles or anything that we'll be pushing for, for this year, and that was part of what we always try to hear from him at this time, this time of year for the update. The next thing in here is a CMS building project update. There's a few slides in here. One's just sort of the cover page from the building committee. These came right from the building, the public building committee meeting. What you can see in here is, they have a, it's called the DD Construction Estimate. So that's the design development. So basically, they do an estimate that we, we move forward with it. Once it gets approved, they go through and they refine the design. And when they're refining that design, you're working out, you know, little, little kinks, because now you really are, you know, you're, you're figuring out exactly where you want doors, or exactly where you need this closet, and then that has implications for exactly where plumbing needs to go. And we've done soil testing, and we've done those types of things. So they go through and they, then they have two more estimators go through to get this, and we have to get this submitted to the MSBA to then move forward with the project, and it's more just keeping us on track. So when we did the initial project funding agreement, the total kind of construction costs that we had that are in this scope was $114,295,000. Right now, they're showing it at $114,294,000. So it looks like it's almost the exact same. There is a little bit of gamesmanship in that because we do include a lot of contingency in this stage, and to get to that number, they tap into some of that contingency. So if you notice, contingency was at, the design and pricing contingency was at 8.4 million, it's down to 4.3 million. The escalation contingency was at 5 million, it's down to 2.26 million. So they, they, they use those contingencies to kind of balance that number out, but, but those, that's kind of why those contingencies exist, right? Because they know from the time you get from this stage to that stage, things are going to change. So overall, I would say it's positive. We're, so, I think it's positive. We haven't had to make any, we do have to submit to them a list of what they call value engineering, which are basically just different selections or options or choices that you might make to save money. We've incorporated some of those that we just felt were actually appropriate, right? There's been some material selections and things that actually felt were the most, more appropriate choice. It may have been priced out at a, at a higher price point in the earlier phase. There are some other little finishes and types of things that we, we've been going through, but we haven't had to make any type of value engineering decisions that would compromise any parts of the design at this point, so. That's pretty much the update from the design development package. In your, there's a whole bunch of pages in here, and they're kind of, they're kind of hard to read because they kind of bounce all over the place. This is literally the, every year, we have to file an end-of-year report with all of our financial expenditures. These are just all the individual pages from that report. So basically, all of our accounts have to have certain codes in them. You're basically compiling those account codes, and you're entering them in the state's spreadsheet the way they want them, so that the state can try to compare all the districts in a uniform manner. So it's, it's, it is a big operation to sort of reconcile all these numbers with the town, reconcile them all with your accounts, and get this all put together. So Annette has been working on this, and we were able to submit our end-of-year report. So this is, this is what we submitted. There's not really a ton we need to go over it, with it, unless you have any specific questions. At the end of the day, the, you know, one of the things is our FY24 net school spending, if you just want to kind of get to the, to the bottom line of it. Our required net school spending, when you consider all the indirect costs from the town, was $32,534,279. Our actual net school spending last year was $35,733,054. So we were probably about $2.8 million above our required net school spending last year. So that's, and then this year, there's a, you fill out for your FY25 based on your budgeted amounts. Our budgeted amounts this year, we were budgeted to spend $38 million and change. Our required is 34.4, so this year, we're about, call it 3, 3.6 over net school spending. So those are all, all good, and we're in compliance with all of our, our spending requirements and reporting them all out. I will just say, if anyone's sort of digging through these, if you have any questions on any particular line, you can feel free to ask me, because sometimes when you look at a line and you assume certain things are in that line, there might be more things in that line than you think, because it's all based on sort of the different codes for each account. FY26 budget, we're working on that. I have the, I think we have the budget, so no sooner do we submit FY24, we're, we're all the way into FY, in FY26. So we have our timeline there. So earlier, I guess it was last month, we had our admin meeting to really start the process. We have a new form that we're, currently principals are getting budget requests from their staff. The, will be, they're supposed, the timeframe we gave for them was to ask for that by their staff, from their staff no later than the 18th of December, because we're asking them to get their budgets to me and Annette by January 8th. Once we have their budgets submitted, we'll start compiling a preliminary budget, and we'll do some meetings with the principals and directors that week so that we can compile the preliminary budget, which we hope to have by January 27th for the tri-council meeting, and at that point, we'll talk about different things. This year will be kind of a tricky year. It is a contract negotiation year, so we're, we're going to have to put some placeholders in. What we'll probably do is sort of get an estimate that we use as a placeholder for all our contracts, and then we'll just need to know what that placeholder is, and then we'll, as we move through the negotiation process, we'll just have to make adjustments as necessary. The other thing that isn't unknown is the bus bid that's on there. We are working on that. My goal is to try to get the bus bid. We got to submit it by this Wednesday, so we can get it posted by next Wednesday, because my goal is to try to have those bid documents. I would like to try to get them back prior to the preliminary budget, so we have a real, a hard number. If I can't get them before then, hopefully right after that, so then when we make the first revision, we have them. But our bus contract is also up. We've exhausted our, our extension years, so we need to go out to bid. The advanced learning pilot, I know I mentioned that. I know, I think there was an article in there last week and the, and the item about it. And so we had a team, we had a professional development in Marlboro last Thursday. There were nine of us, I think, from Clinton who were there, and it was an all-day training. And I'd say the, the training to me and to most of our team, I think, didn't feel very overwhelming. And I think the, the reason for that was, the training spent a lot of time sort of talking about MTSS and the Mass Tier System of Support and things like universal design for learning, and a lot of those things that we're already doing as a district. So it's almost like while they're trying to sort of lay this foundation, I think we've, we felt like we were in a good place because we already kind of had that foundation. So in one respect, it made it a long day, but in the other sense, you feel pretty good about the fact that I feel like we're doing the right things, and, and I think we felt well-versed and prepared for that. So we hope to continue along with that pilot. But it does, you know, it's good, there's a lot of addressing sort of like misconceptions, trying to identify a definition of what do we really mean by advanced learning, those types of things, and that's what we're kind of going through in this program, so. Early college designation update, there is a letter, actually, I think there's like an email and a letter and a, sort of a schedule, but we did apply for early college as a partner with Mount Wachusett and Pittsburgh State. So we had to apply for Part A. We did get approval basically from Part A to move forward in the process, so now we're moving on to Part B to try to make sure we get our early college designation. So we have, you know, we have students taking these early college courses. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have all the components that the state's looking for to, to be considered a early college designated program. And I think the last thing I had on the agenda was the AMSA amendment. So if you remember, we talked about, I, I shared this with you, I don't know, a few meetings ago, and I think that, that might even, it might have been a while ago, and that might even have been what led to sort of the AMSA survey, or that was in there somewhere, where basically AMSA is asking to, they're requesting to increase their enrollment by 34 students. Currently, their maximum limit's 966, and they're trying to go up to an even 1,000. At the last time we discussed this, I kind of said, you know, it's not a huge, doesn't seem to be a huge deal to us, because, you know, we don't have a ton of kids there, so in, of an extra 30-something slots, you know, what's, it might mean a couple of kids to us, you know? Which is, which is true. Since then, I know we've had some conversation, I've had some conversation with some of the, or email conversation mostly with some of the other superintendents. I think Matt, you might have had some conversation with the chair from, from Hudson. And, and they, they raised some good points over there, and I think that those, those other member districts, I think some of them feel this a little more than we do, if you're more geographically closer. And I think one of their major concerns is really, if you look at the, the students, if you look at the student population at AMSA from pretty much any, any subgroup indicator you want, it really doesn't align to the subgroups of their communities that they're drawing from. So what does that mean? That means, you know, disproportionately, when you look at AMSA, you know, they're not providing as many opportunities to students with disabilities, students of color, those types of things, when you look at the overall demographics of the towns that they draw from, right? So that's one of the major kind of concerns. The other concern is the financial component, and it's sort of saying, if you're not really serving these communities equitably, right, now you're putting an extra financial strain on the communities to try to meet the needs of the students that are kind of left, if you will, from, you know, from that standpoint. So, so I'm, I'm comfortable, after talking to them, to join them and write a letter. The letter's on behalf of, you know, it'll be signed by me, that basically also shares our concerns, similar concerns with, with their expansion. And I think, I think it's also, while it seems like it's 34 students, I think part of the other underlying concern is if it's 34 this year, and that goes through, is it 200 next year? Is it 300 the year after that? And where does it end? So, so if the board's comfortable with it, I'll probably send a letter saying that, you know, echoing some of those concerns and sort of saying that we would, we would recommend that the, the cap stay the, stay the same, so.
Do you need a motion for that, or is that just? I mean, we can certainly endorse it.
Yeah, if you want to endorse it, that's fine. And if, I don't know if you want to chime in, Matt, if there's, if I, if I captured that correctly. I know that you talked to the Hudson.
I think that's about right. I think, you know, a lot of the major concerns, like, if you look at the other communities, I think when we looked at the numbers, Clinton has about 74 students that are over at AMSA, or roughly thereabout, if you look at the last few years, whereas like Marlboro's at like 275 students, right? And Hudson's at 187 students. So to Dr. Meyer's point, like, I mean, we're certainly on the periphery of impact, like, we don't, we don't see as much as they do, but I think there's massive concern around precedent, and, you know, this year being this amount, and then pre, next year being much more, and, and that financial component that goes along with losing a lot of your, your best students and not having equity in how they choose them. So the chair reached out to me, I had a conversation with Dr. Meyer, and just said, this might be something we want to consider, just so we understand how it impacts the communities as a whole, so that way we're, we're standing in unison versus being an outlier on something that you could be supporting those communities with, so. I think you covered it.
Right, and I, and I guess, to your point, the one point I did add in there is that there are basically four towns that they list as their kind of drawing communities. It's Marlboro, Hudson, Clinton, and Maynard. And I know those other three are all sending a similar letter. So it's sort of like by, by us sort of sending something to at least sort of support our neighboring towns, it does now flip it to more of a unison, united voice, not sort of a three-to-one vote, kind of.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, just for anybody listening, or if anybody reads this in the paper, this is not by any means saying that the, the town of Clinton is in any way against the opportunity for families to go to AMSA or to exercise their right to do so, but that there should be checks and balances in place to not just, you know, open it up and say that there shouldn't be, you know, puts and takes around conversation to make sure it's been doing, being done thoughtfully, both from a financial impact as well as what it means to the students that they're serving. And that's all that this is, because, you know, sometimes we get a little bit of information, turns into a narrative that's not at all what the information represents. So I think it's really important that people understand that that's what's kind of, that the goal here is all.
Steve, do we have, you said the four towns, do they give you a certain number, a certain quota every year, or is it just their admissions office pools everybody and?
I don't, I don't know if it's, you know, like, a certain allocation. I don't know if there's a cutoff for that. I'd have to, I'd have to research that. I haven't, I mean, I haven't ever been told that we're like at a cap, so I'm not aware. Yeah.
Great. Thanks. I mean, I'll certainly entertain a motion to, to support Dr. Meyer in sending the letter, like, I don't know if there's anything we need to, you know, binding from our committee other than to say that we're in support of that.
Someone would like to. Yeah, I'll make that motion just to Dr. Meyer's letter too.
Okay.
A second.
Any discussion? Awesome. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure, those are due by this Friday. I'll try to author that letter tomorrow, so I can get it to the DESE, and I'll make sure you guys all have a copy of it.
Great. Thanks. Good. As far as advisory committees, looks like we have all the scheduled next meetings and the assignees to each subcommittee, which I think we were looking at from last time, so thank you, Kelly. Any specific questions, thoughts, or concerns for any of the committee meetings that are upcoming? Everything pretty much on par? You good?
The only two things I would say is just the Policies and Procedures Committee. I did mention that meeting, just want to make sure we confirm that, that the 13th at 6 is okay, and I'll work on that agenda if that's fine. And then the Wellness Committee, we, I am having a Wellness Committee meeting tomorrow at 3:00. We are looking to try to add a school committee representative. It's okay if we don't have one for tomorrow at 3:00, because it's sort of, I think I told you, the Wellness Committee kind of fell out by the wayside, I think, and sort of got engulfed in kind of our Safety Committee during the COVID years. We're trying to sort of resurrect it, so we have some new parents that we're welcoming on board to that committee tomorrow and kind of going over it, but at some point, we should get a school committee representative on the Wellness Committee if you have any, either someone wants to volunteer, or you want to appoint somebody. But I don't, I certainly, I'm not worried about it for tomorrow's meeting, but there is a meeting tomorrow.
Anybody have any thoughts on that in regard to, I mean, none of you are all serving on many committees. I mean, I work from home, I'm happy to take it, like, it's not a problem.
What's it do?
What's it do?
Do I have to, like, eat right and stuff?
It pays triple your other seven.
Have to like take care of myself and eat right?
Well, it's funny because it is part of why we wanted to bring it back is because it is sort of looking at things like your health and PE curriculum, your food service, a lot of those things that are actually relevant topics right now, right? With the new frameworks in health and PE, with the, with the transition and food service director, those types of things. So that's really a part of why we said, hey, we really need to get this, this functioning again. Not that there's a hu, it's mostly a policy advisory committee for wellness-type policies, so, I mean, it could almost be a, a sub-subcommittee of policy if we wanted it to be something like that, but, but that's really their, their primary role would be to kind of like, sort of make rec, policy recommendations to the school committee.
You'll do it?
Sure, why not?
I'm available. We'll see you tomorrow at 3:00.
So right now, we do have, Beth Armstrong is on it as the food service representative, Amy Mason's on it as the lead nurse, Jen Govan's on it as the athletic director, and then we have a PTA representative and two LPAC representatives. And, and that's sort of, and me, that's where we are right now. And now we have, now we have Brenny, so we're at, we're eight strong right now, so.
Ready to go.
Anything under home business? Steve, I just had one, do, do we actually have an update on where we are in the process for the food services?
Yeah, I said that quickly in the staffing update, sorry. We, we did, we started interviews today for the first round, yep. So we're hoping to make an offer by the vacation if we can.
I swear it wasn't. Anything under new business?
Quite good.
I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.